Good afternoon, everybody. I am calling the Planning Commission regular meeting to order for Thursday, June 7th, 2018. Ms. Vaughn, would you take role, please?
Thank you. Chair Wiskom.
Here.
Vice Chair Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins is absent.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, we're going to move on to preliminary matters. Item number 2A, request for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Ms. Galarte?
Chair Wiskom, we have none.
Okay, thank you. And how about B, announcements and appeals?
We have none.
Okay, great. So, we're going to move on to item number 2C, review consideration and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. So, the first set is the draft minutes from May 10th, 2018, with resolutions. Does anyone want any of the resolutions taken separately from the minutes? Does anyone have any comments or discussion?
Move to approve the minutes and resolutions.
Second. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Thompson, second by Commissioner Lodge, for the minutes and the resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries unanimously. And now, we'll move on to May 17th, 2018. We have the minutes, the draft minutes, and then we have two resolutions, 1409 and 1413 Shoreline Drive and the 1700 block of East Cabrillo Boulevard. And you have in your packet the amended resolution for the 1700 block of, actually, it's on your desk, of East Cabrillo. I believe we've all reviewed that. And I had one small correction to... Okay, yes, Ms. Vaughn, go ahead.
So, for the May 17th, 2018 draft minutes on page four, we had a slight change to remove the word "LIDAR" from the third comment under Chair Wiskom. And then, for the resolution, number 016-18 for the 1700 block of East Cabrillo, it was brought to my attention that I had recorded the vote incorrectly. We had six yeses and one absent, as opposed to seven yeses and one absent.
Ah, okay.
And those were the only changes brought to my attention.
Very good. Okay. Does anyone else have any amendments to that? Okay, I would entertain...
Move to approve the minutes and the resolutions, the minutes as corrected.
The minutes as corrected and the resolutions.
And the resolutions.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lodge, second by Commissioner Schwartz. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson abstains, and that carries. So, that's it for those. Good. Okay, we're on to item number 2D. This is comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. Is anyone here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close general public comment, and we're going to move on to item number three, which is a discussion item. It's the annual update for Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital Modernization and Seismic Compliance Project, 400 West Pueblo Street, SP8 Hospital Zone, General Plan Designation Institutional. Ms. Bedard, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Bedard. I'm the staff planner, doing the brief presentation on the Cottage Hospital update for construction year 2017. So, the purpose of the hearing is to review the annual status of the project during construction, scan for construction calendar year 2017. Purpose of the hearing, why we're here today, is the original resolution approved in March 24th, 2005, required a condition of the resolution to have an annual meeting, every meeting, every year, once a year, every year, and following, three years after the completion of construction. So, today's purpose is just a discussion item, no action will be taken today. This is just a brief synopsis, will not read this, just the language from the resolution. Here's an overall vicinity map. On the left is the Cottage Hospital, highlighted in yellow, and on the right is just kind of a, more of a site plan image with Cottage Hospital site, Castillo Street, and the Natt Building over here. Next few slides are just more informational, kind of fun aerial slides during the year's various phases of construction. So, as you see, this is in 2004, goes back a little ways, back when Castillo Street was still present. Here's the construction site. And then, 2008, well into construction, project site. 2012, this portion of the construction completed. 2015, moving into Phase 6 construction, the site. Here's a nice side-by-side aerial, 2015 and 2017, progress made in the last couple years of Phase 6 construction. And a nice little image identifying the site plan, floor plan configuration, Phase 6. And another nice little, just demonstration aerial. So, the purpose why we're here today is to review condition of compliance from the original resolution. Some main focuses of the resolution were the tree care and maintenance, such as maintaining the existing Morton Bay fig tree. As stated in the staff report and in the applicant's packet of information, the arborist has reviewed the tree condition on time, and they came to the conclusion that the Morton Bay fig tree remains in good health, as well as the Coast live oaks. Solid waste reduction is another factor of the condition of compliance, and present date through the phases of construction, 95.5% of solid waste has been diverted. The condition also required the applicants to hold, Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital, hold four neighborhood meetings. Those were held last year at various dates, and there was no construction-related complaints received during the calendar year 2017. Here's the Morton Bay fig, little image on the left is a Google Street image from 2007, and then, larger picture on the right, 2017. Solid waste reduction, again, 95.5% diversion of solid waste, 4.5% went to landfill. So, conclusion of Phase 6, current construction began approximately September 2015, estimated completion July of 2018. Phase 8 is interior remodel, construction scheduled to begin October of 2018, and estimated completion by May of 2020. That concludes my presentation. The applicant will do a brief presentation as well.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Commissioner Lodge, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. In reading through the staff report, and I know this happened a long time ago, but the condition was included of this report being made for three years after completion.
Yes.
Do you know why there was, this was, I can understand the first part of it, you know, while it's under construction, having the reports, but I'm a little puzzled by the three years beyond.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. The best of my guesses is that it was probably just to ensure continued maintenance of the trees, the landscaping, maybe that there's no other neighborhood incidences. That's best guess, maybe.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Scaro. Yes, welcome.
Chair Wiskom, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ron Biscaro. I'm the vice president for project management for Cottage Health, and I'd like to update you on our perspective on the status of Phase 6 and our facility master plan. I'm here with my colleague, Tom Thompson, who's our project director, so in case you have any questions that I can't answer, Tom is here to back me up. So, let me start here. I think we need the screen to change. Okay, great. As Ms. Bedard explained, we're in Phase 6, and we began this in September of 2015, and we've made excellent progress. Our anticipated completion date was this month. We are probably a couple of months behind schedule, which I think overall is quite good, so we expect to receive a certificate of occupancy from the state of California, I would say around Labor Day, plus or minus 30 days, and that's been our prediction now for the better part of a year. But we're in the final throes of our interior build-out right now. The Compton Pavilion is the patient care pavilion that will be on Pueblo Street, and the centennial-winning expansion, soon to be called the Arlington Pavilion, when we occupy Phase 6, includes these particular services. And so, I'm going to spend a little time, show you a few photos, and give you an update, and see if you have any questions on that, and then I'll touch on the Phase 8 projects as well. Again, from the previous slide, you see the scope of work, about 134,000 square feet for the two pavilions and an interconnecting elevator tower there to the right center. We have about 29 points of connection between this series of buildings and the existing buildings. So, there's a lot of building tie-ins, if you will, and we have a linked building now that connects our legacy buildings to our Phase 4 buildings, and that will become part of the emergency department when we're completed in Phase 6. Here's our overall schedule. Again, originally, we thought we would be done by 2013. Projects being as they are, everything has taken longer than expected, especially Phase 5, which was a demolition phase that took almost three and a half years to work through the four buildings, to demolish them, and tie in all the electrical and other MEP systems. So, we've been making good progress since we started Phase 6, as you can see, and September 1st is probably a realistic date for us. Another photo that you just saw, Compton Pavilion from across the Pueblo parking structure. Here is our amphitheater, which is a lovely 140-seat place of meeting that is almost complete, and so that will be interior as part of our Arlington Pavilion. This is our nurse station, very similar in how they look to the current ones in the Phase 4 as well, so you can see the level of completion here. It's almost done. This is a little difference, it's a pediatric room. We went with lighter colors. There's some really nifty things we have that are oriented to pediatrics and very more, much more youthful decor on this floor of the new hospital. So, our neonatal ICU, again, a very light-filled area, and you can see that is essentially complete. So, now, we're dealing with all the interior testing of our low-voltage systems and our fire alarm systems over the next couple of months. This is from the sixth floor. You can see the pathway leading out of the Compton Pavilion, and you can see the public right-of-way improvements that began. This is about two weeks old, so Pueblo is the street you see to the north. This is the interior pavilion. It's courtyard, will look pretty much exactly the same as the one we have between the Hunipro and Ridley Tree pavilions now, and so this will be configured with a River of Life as well, and so this is about two weeks old as well. And here are the public improvements, sidewalk, curb, gutter in process, and you can see the Morton Bay fig tree at the corner of Pueblo and Castillo right there. Phase 8, again, we have only three remodels, so Phase 8 technically is the last phase. Many of the components of this phase have been done in other timeframes, Phase 6, Phase 5, some even during Phase 4, as we rejiggered our departments all over the place. We moved a lot of folks out of the hospital to Galida, because we just did not have enough space in the hospital in adjoining buildings for many of our staff. So, we have outlined buildings that support Cottage, but they're not able to all fit in one place, because we had, you know, square footage restrictions. So, the three projects that we have remaining are to take the current emergency department, which will begin, we think, in October, subject to the certificate of occupancy for Phase 6. We expect to be permitted on this project and start in the fourth quarter, and that takes the existing emergency department and renovates that. So, when we're done, the combination of the 25 ER rooms in Phase 6, combined with the balance that are here, will give us 43 rooms for patient care versus the 21 or 22 that we have now. So, essentially, we are able to double our capacity. Currently, we see about 49,000 patients per year in the emergency department at Cottage. This will give us capacity for up to 75 to 80. So, I would say, over the next 10 to 20 years, depending on growth, we should have plenty of capacity. So, a very important project. Administration remodel on Two South has been always envisioned. This will eliminate our café, mostly due to seismic improvements, but we will also have a conference room here, so a pretty innocuous remodel, all interior. And then, we have a connector building. Basically, it's an existing corridor that needs to happen between the third-floor bridge of the new Compton Pavilion and what we call the South Wing. So, those three projects will occur between the latter part of this year, I would say mid-2020. So, that'll culminate, you know, anything that we envisioned for Cottage back in 2001. Just a word about this, these are outside the scope of our facility master plan, but since the state of California allowed more flexibility with seismic upgrades, we are choosing, as we did back in 2011 and 2012, we upgraded the legacy buildings, the South Wing and the East Wing, to OSHPOD, Office of State Healthwide Planning Department, seismic compliance level 2, which allowed these buildings to go to 2030, and increase their safety, and increase their earthquake reliability. SPC 4D is the next level of state-of-California seismic compliance, which allows these buildings to be used indefinitely if we so choose, and this allows these buildings to be upgraded again, to a level, almost to the same level as we're building now. The difference is, we're building steel-framed buildings now, steel-framed buildings, and these are concrete steel-reinforced rebar buildings. So, they're built in the '60s, and we're really trying to upgrade them, to use them for as long as we wish, so they don't have to come down in the future. So, these projects will start in 2019, go on through 2021 probably, and we're working through the process now with the city. This is just a quick axiometric drawing of the South Wing, and you can see the level of seismic improvement here is really about adding shear walls and footings and piles to ensure that the building have higher structural integrity. So, we have to do on the South Wing about three major shear walls, two on one side here, one on the Pueblo side, you see the cross braces there, and on the backside, we have another shear wall as well. So, that's the type of work we will have to do. It'll be pretty transparent, community-wise. A lot of it's interior, some of it's on the exterior, but we see this as an enhancement to both buildings. It'll make them earthquake safer, and we're very fortunate to have the support of the state of California in doing this. So, we provide construction updates. Again, we are required to have two meetings per year. We have four, and we've had those ever since we've had some controversy about helicopter landings, and so I provided this slide just to let you know that our helicopter landings are essentially stable, you know, in terms of how many per week, around 3.67 per week through the early part of 2018. So, mostly related to pediatric trauma, neurosurgical, and cardiac trauma. So, I think that concludes my presentation, and I trust that gives you a pretty good idea of where we are. We're, again, very close to schedule. We're excited about occupying our new building in the late fall of this year, having some community events in the fall as well, and then slowly, we'll move into the final remodels over the next year and a half or two, and we'll be complete. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming today and giving us the update. Do, I'm going to take public comment. Why don't I do that first? Does anyone here want to speak on this item that's a member of the public? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close public comment, and it's to the commission, and I see some lights on. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions for you, Ron. So, one, just an editorial comment. I'm really sorry you have to end that presentation with a slide on helicopter landings and issues, because if you need that, if you need that service and you want it, and it affects your life in some way, you're not really worried about whether that's 3.67 per week or 10, because it is a truly a life-serving function for this region, that if you got into maybe even our-size town somewhere out in a remote part of California, they don't have that luxury, and they wish they would. So, I'm happy you're managing it, but I'm sorry you had to mention it in the frame that it's a low number, because if that was a high number, it would be serving a vital purpose.
Yeah, thank you.
This question on, as you move, as you've already moved probably, I guess, to interior work, and you no longer have any just flat wasted space for parking, are you finding that the worker parking challenges and the burdens on the neighborhood are tougher, or are they being managed pretty well?
Well, we've been parking our construction workers out at the Macy's area, and we've trolleyed them in. So, it's worked very, very well. We've had very few complaints, a couple that I can think of in the last three years of this project. So, there's been a lot of compliance by McCarthy, the contractor, and their subcontractors. We've had up to 230 workers there, and coming in and out, you know, for the past couple of years, and they've done a really good job in managing it. I think we may have issued one fine in the context of our contract with them that I can recall, several more in Phase 4. We had a lot more going on there, a lot more disruption, but it's gone quite well. This has been, I think, pretty much a non-issue as far as neighborhood issues.
Good. You're in that lower pavilion, you must be then, because I'll go out to lunch out there and drive by and go, what the heck are all those cars doing for an empty mall sometime, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's in that lower area.
Good for you.
Yep.
And then, you mentioned the increase, the eventual or soon-to-increase in ER rooms, and as you know, I have a daughter who actually has been admitting people in the hallway of the ER section because of a shortage of ER rooms.
Yes.
And so, that's a great thing, but I'm also wondering if you would have a moment to share on what the plans or the provisions the hospital has for some event in town that would put a huge, huge burden on a great inflow into that type of section, into the ER rooms at either one of the facilities, and what type of plans you have for that in the future? Sometime or another, I'm sure life is going to intrude on Santa Barbara, and I'm just kind of interested in how you guys manage that reality that might be coming.
Well, in fact, due to the fire and the mudslide in particular, life did intrude in a huge way. Yesterday, I was in attendance at a function, and the fire department representative, Mr. Zanaboni, talked about all the transports that occurred, you know, by ambulance and by air to Cottage during the mudslide event where many people lost their lives and were injured, and we handled that huge influx. In fact, I was one of the first people that got called, living in Solvang, and we initiated our disaster management plan, and I think our staff did a remarkable job. No one passed in our ER. We handled everybody that came in by any means. So, while at times, and I think probably more than any other time that I've been at Cottage and that we can remember, been in this community over 30 years now, that was an inundation of patients, and somehow, we managed the triage process. We were triaging patients outside the ER, anywhere we could, moving patients that were lower priority out of beds, allowing patients who needed admission to get inpatient care, and we got through that crisis as best we could. And I think that, you know, while it's not ideal, we probably are in the ER now that has probably been overcapacited for a good 10 or 12 years, I think we've been able to manage, because we've increased our staffing, and we've tried a lot to make the throughput process in the hospital as efficient as possible. And so, we hold a lot of patients in the ER sometimes, more than we like, but as we get into Phase 6, we'll have more beds in that phase than we have now, and so we'll be able to have better throughput. And then, what's also good is we're opening up some areas in Phase 6 that allow more inpatient beds to be utilized for short-term purposes. And so, the patients that we hold in the ER, 10 or 12 sometimes per night, will now be able to get to a bed, and the ER will be free. So, we've been somewhat bottlenecked by our own limited number of beds for many years, and so as we build a new hospital and occupy Phase 6, it allows some of the spaces in the South Wing to be backfilled with short-term patients, because our overall census hasn't increased much, maybe by 2% or 3% in the last few years. It's been very, very stable. But we go through really heavy times from about November to about April or May, and we have to, it's kind of crisis du jour, and our staff do a remarkable job. So, I'd say, we've exercised about as tough as it's going to get in terms of our disaster planning process. I think we did a really great job. I wish Mr. Werft here were to talk more about it, but since I'm here, I'll mention that, and I think the point of expanding is that we allow our patients to be triaged sooner. We're going to initiate a whole new triage process, if you will, when we get to Phase 6, final completion of the Phase 8 ER, and so we're going to have sort of a fast-track process to get patients to one side of the emergency department, and the ones that have maybe higher level of care needs will go to more, you know, intense rooms and trauma rooms. And I think the rooms will allow us to manage the patients way better, reduce wait times, and have good outcomes. As an example, Galida Valley, before it was built or rebuilt, only had eight rooms in its ER. Now, we have 20, and their wait times are lickety-split. People get in and out of there super-fast, and that's just an example of what I think we'll have in about a year and a half or two when we finish our emergency department in Phase 8.
Thanks. I'm going to end up sitting up here for, I don't know, half, maybe two-thirds of your project, and I just want to continue to commend you guys. I know it was a, there was one point where it was just hell for the neighborhood.
Yep.
Understandably, but the, again, for our size city, the facilities and the caliber of care we're getting, I think, and when people look back at this and are just going to be so thankful to have this type of facility in our city. So, thanks. Thanks for the update.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Appreciate your comments, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you want questions and comments together? Does that sound good? Thank you, Ms. Scaro, for being here. It's been a number of years since we've continued to have you come, and we did our site visit. And just a few questions, and then I have a comment. I'm wondering, given Cottage's critical role in handling emergency cases following the January debris flow, has Cottage been part of now some larger, I'll call it, public health, kind of emergency resiliency task force with the county or other agencies? I'm sure you've, you know, you've experienced and learned a lot to be contributors to that.
Ms. Schwartz, I personally have not been involved in that, but I know our disaster planning coordinator, Susanna Shaw, has, and during the disaster process, there's a tremendous amount of coordination that had to occur between law enforcement, the fire department, and all the agencies that participated in both tragic events. And we were fortunate to have our CEO, and last night, we had a chance to commiserate with the CHP manager, and she facilitated the transport of like hundreds of our employees during that time when the freeway was closed, and it was just a marvelous collaboration that occurred to allow our patients to be treated properly. Otherwise, we would have had a week, week and a half, without being able to staff the hospital adequately, because 20 to 25% of our employees, you know, live in Ventura or beyond, you know, to the south of Santa Barbara. So, I can't speak to exactly what's occurring, but there's been a lot of post-crisis management meetings, and I can't speak to it adequately, but I'd be happy to get back to you separately with more information.
Well, that's not necessary. I just am encouraged to hear that, and would just hope that Cottage stays very involved, because as I've been following the county's new strategic plan, a planning effort regarding Montecito and the debris flow, and really, community-wide resiliency planning, I think, you know, you have a very important role to play, so...
I will say that Katie Bashalovich, our VP for Marketing, and some of her staff, and also our mental health staff have been involved in support groups for residents and people who have been disenfranchised since the beginning, since the first night, because all those patients, you know, came to us so quickly. And so, there's an ongoing effort that's indefinite in terms of social and mental health support that Cottage is providing, and we're only, you know, the more we can do to work with our partners in the community, I think the better is for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, I wanted to ask you about the number of beds on, in our staff report, it mentions that the number of licensed beds will be reduced from 456 to 337, but I thought I also heard you mention that the overall census has increased 2% to 3%, so help me reconcile those two different statistics.
Yeah, the overall, the average census for Cottage is probably around 240 patients. So, that's what, it fluctuates anywhere from 200 to about 320. And so, our bed capacity is, will be 337 at the end, as far as the facility master plan is concerned.
So, then, is the reduction of license, what is the reduction of licensed beds due to... to then? What's, what's the, I'm not understanding, what's changed, shall we say?
Yeah, I can't recall the, the original number, but as far as the FMP facility master plan is concerned, the official number is 337 that we have and we're done. And so the difference being, prior to that, we had probably 450 beds, and so a lot of those were semi-private, and now they're essentially all private rooms. And so when we have a census that fluctuates from, let's say, 200 to 300 or 320, those patients are in private rooms largely, so they're able to be diffused throughout the hospital. And as I indicated earlier, sometimes we have a shortage of medical surgical beds, which causes us to hold patients in the ER. And so when we get back to the situation where Phase Six is open, some of the beds that would otherwise be out of service are now going to be available to us as backup. So we can open them at any time, but we're not staffing those.
I see.
Staffing those rooms.
And then also referenced in our staff report is the excellent job that Cottage has done in reducing and reusing and recycling of the waste. And these percentages, as I think I remarked last year, I mean, 95.5% diversion, you know, since 2005 is really commendable. I just wanted to ask you to tell me, or is everything going to the Tahiguis landfill or do you have different diversion or receiving sites?
It depends on the material.
For the different materials?
Yeah, and, and a lot of the concrete was, you know, recycled and used as base, if you may recall, in, in our Phase Six project. So we're, we're using the recycled concrete from our former hospitals that were torn down, and we recycle them either onsite or offsite and have used them as base for the new hospital. So I think it's gone, it's gone to good use, and we have been in, you know, tremendous compliance, I think, with the recycling goals that were set out and the conditions of approval.
Yes, I would agree. Okay, and then just some kind of ancillary questions here. On the Arlington Pavilion and the new theater, is that going to be available for rental by the public, nonprofit organizations, various entities?
I expect the answer is, it's going to be available with limitations depending on our needs at Cottage. So that'll be something, process will be managed by our administrative staff, and I'm not involved in that per se. So I expect the answer is yes. I just don't know that there's a, there's a, a plan or what the plan will be at this point.
Okay. That'd be helpful to know, just because it looked very attractive. I'm sure it's going to be state-of-the-art, and we continue to actually have a shortage of these sorts of resources, facilities in the community. So if you can open it up even on a limited basis with certain conditions, it'd be helpful for the community.
And we currently have community meetings that are held at the Burtonis Auditorium, which is on the sixth floor, and I expect the same will be true here, but there'll be limitations. We do a lot of teaching. Of course, we have a graduate medical education program where we have 60 to 70 residents, and there's ongoing teaching. So the primary purpose of the amphitheater is to support our residency program and our, you know, clinical teaching program. And beyond that, I think there probably will be some availability, but that process is yet to be developed.
And the, my last question, are the community events in the fall, will you just keep us apprised? I'm, I'm sure we'll see something in the media, but you mentioned that there will be events.
There will be, and I don't know the dates yet. I know there's a donor event coming up in October, but no, no other dates have been set. We haven't even set our move date yet, because we can't really count on that till we get the state of California giving us a certificate of occupancy, and then we're subject to the California Department of Public Health's schedule at that point. So we're hoping to move by November.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'll just conclude by also commending, as I have before, Cottage, you know, there, there were neighbor issues, as we all know, you've re-identified them for us, and I think between you and Suzanne, Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting, being involved very early on with a hotline and responsiveness with the neighborhood meetings, I think has really demonstrated Cottage's commitment to being a good neighbor, and I can't imagine the magnitude of challenge you've had trying to reconstruct, you know, just bring up to standards and modernizing and being a state-of-the-art healthcare facility for our community embedded in a residential neighborhood. We've talked about this.
Sure.
You know, it's one thing if you're out, way out in the suburbs and there's nobody else around you except for perhaps even other, maybe, commercial activities, commercial properties, but to be right in the heart of Santa Barbara poses a, a whole host of other more complicating factors. So I really am so respectful of and appreciative of Cottage and the level of diligence and commitment you've shown. So thank you so much. We're so appreciative, and the community should be very grateful.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights on. I, I just want to add my personal thanks and commendation for, for what you've done. I, you know, the reading through the, the staff report and the, the backup documentation, including your neighborhood meetings, which you haven't had any complaints in a long time. You've really, you've really done a, a great job on a, on a very, very, very big project, so.
Thank you.
You maybe could handle a couple others in this. But no, thank you very much, and we, we all on the planning commission do appreciate your, your reports and your updates and.
You're welcome.
And good luck on your, your date. I hope, I hope you make it.
Yeah, I've had the benefit of working with a great team, led by Mr. Thompson and my staff, and we've had pretty good partners throughout this, and construction's a tough business, but we got, got through most of it now, so we're looking forward to wrapping it up soon.
Great.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Great. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Really appreciate it. Okay. Ms. Galarte, I, there was planning, planning staff here for the resolution on Cabrillo, and you had an announcement to make, and I know they're gone, but would you make it anyway, because I forgot?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Wiskom. I was just going to announce, they were here in case there were any changes to the resolution. However, Stephanie Diaz, who was brought on board as a contract planner for, I think she came in on September to work specifically on the Los Patos Cabrillo project, today was her last day. She's been in planning for 38 years, and she's decided to retire. So we were lucky to have her during her last year with us, so we wish her well.
And maybe if there's any emails from my fellow commissioners, they could be forwarded to her, and I apologize for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Not having you announce that while she was here. She did a fine job. Great. Okay. Do my fellow commissioners, are you all right to go on here? Are we all all right to go on? Okay. Then we're going to move on to item number four, which is the discretionary application of Trish Allen of Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, agent for Steve Odell, property owner at Five Santa Cruz Boulevard, for coastal development permit in the appealable jurisdiction of the city's coastal zone. And Ms. Allen, we'll have a staff presentation and we'll give you 15 minutes, 20 minutes? Which do you prefer for your presentation?
The longest possible.
Okay, 20 minutes.
Just in case. I don't think I'm going to need that much time.
Okay. We'll give you 20 minutes, and then we'll take commissioner questions. We will open it up for public comment, and then we will go back to Ms. Allen for any wrap-up remarks for five minutes or any from staff for five minutes or so, and then it'll be back to the commission. So, okay, let me, while you're doing that, I'm going to set up this timer. Yeah, I was waiting for. Ms. Arseniega, do you want to go ahead with the staff report?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, I guess Ms. Allen, you're ready, right? Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Members of the public and planning commissioners, my name is Megan Arseniega. I'm the city planner on this project. It's the project at Five Santa Cruz Boulevard, which is on the mesa. It is a bluff-top property and is actually a flag lot that accesses Santa Cruz Lane through, between two other lots. Santa Cruz Lane is about a block down from Shoreline Park on Shoreline Drive, just to orient you. And we have an unusual, unusual project history before us. The subject property is actually not the one with the large structure that we're talking about. It's the one just to the right of it, and you cannot see it too clearly, but we'll highlight it. Back in the 80s, there was a wooden viewing deck and walls, retaining walls, constructed without permits sometime after 1987. Then in 2017, the property owner wanted to sell, and per the city requirements, applied for a zoning inspection report, and the wooden deck was noted as a violation needing coastal review. So in response to that, here's the wooden deck. The owner and his agent applied for a demolition permit at the city to remove the deck and abate the violation prior to sale. A demo permit was issued for the deck, but it was issued in error without the coastal review that was noted in the ZIR. Since the permit was issued, the applicant went ahead and demoed the permit, and only after that was the city able to notify the owners that a coastal development permit was actually required. So what we're looking at today is an post-removal conditional coastal development permit for that removal. City staff received the coastal development permit application in November of 2017 and conducted a site visit, and we identified that in addition to the deck that was removed, there are also some bluff face wooden planter walls at this property that would have also required a coastal development permit. So we have as-built development existing on the project site, and now we have wrapped that into the coastal development permit request for your consideration today. So the new project scope would be to permit the already performed removal of the wooden deck, and then also there was a brick path that led up to that wooden deck. And then also permit the removal of a concrete support post that previously supported the wooden deck, identified by the geologist as a feature that should be removed. And then also permit the as-built perimeter wall. It's a brick wall topped with a wooden fence, and then the wooden planter walls on the bluff face. So the applicant's proposing to keep those features as is per their geologist's recommendations, and then finally add landscaping or restoration to screen those walls and increase the stability of that slope area. Here's just the overview of their landscaping and restoration plan. And this landscape plan was reviewed by the Single Family Design Review Board. I have minutes, I've distributed them to your commission. They received favorable comments regarding the planting types, and after this commission review, they would return to SFBDB for project design and final approval of that plan. As far as the project review, zoning is pretty consistent. It's a single-family lot, and these are residential improvements, so they're consistent with the zone. And environmental review, you're allowed minor alterations to land for landscaping in that regard, as proposed as just a landscaping project essentially, to permit the as-built and then add the new landscaping. Really where the project issues come out is in the project policy consistency analysis, so Coastal Act policies and our local coastal plan policies. The most obvious of which is our local coastal plan policy 8.2, which very clearly states that no development shall be permitted on the bluff face. And the bluff face is defined as the C-word portion of the property, C-word of the bluff edge. And the bluff edge is defined by a line certified by the California Coastal Commission and is just shown roughly here on the plan. It's a little bit C-word of the existing wooden planks that you can see in the photo, and it would be also a C-word of the tree. So the tree is proposed to remain. So this proposes a problem because all of the improvements that we're looking at technically are on the bluff face. Here's a site plan showing that also. So the blue line is the city's bluff edge line, and all the highlighted yellow are the improvements, and the blue dot up at the corner is where the concrete post previously supporting the deck is located. So in terms of this policy alone, as far as no development on the bluff face, the portions of the project that are consistent with the policy is the removal of the deck and the removal of the brick path. Those already occurred, and that would be consistent with this policy. The items that are inconsistent would be the remaining brick wall and wood fence, and also the wood planter walls that are both on the bluff face. However, we have more than one policy to consider. Coastal Act 30253 requires that new development shall not do any of the following: minimize risks to life and property in areas of high geologic flood and fire hazard, and also assure stability and structural integrity, and neither create nor contribute significantly to erosion, geologic instability, or destruction of the site or surrounding area. So there's a lot of elements to that policy, and this project really kind of struggles with how to meet that policy because it is as-built development. And as it stands, the Coastal Act and the local coastal plan do not specify as-built development. Essentially, it's any development that's new requiring a CDP. So if this hasn't received a CDP yet, which it hasn't, it's part of this request, and therefore it is new development. So there is a, a need to meet these standards. Certainly minimizing risk to the life, having structures fall down onto the beach as the cliff erodes is a concern, but minimizing risk to the property, removing the walls and having more erosion could cause negative impacts to the property. So retaining the walls, as proposed, would seem to meet that first part of standard A. As far as assuring stability, we have a geological report provided by Adam Simmons on behalf of the applicant, talking to the stability of, the benefit of retaining the walls and keeping them in place. Structural integrity would likely be reviewed under the building permit and having building code compliance. As far as creating or contributing significantly to erosion, certainly leaving the walls in place would go to that end and not destroying the site or the surrounding area. And a portion of the geologic report does talk about potential impacts to the neighboring property if we were to remove these walls. So there's a lot packed in that one policy, and there's a lot to consider as these policies compete with each other. Staff's recommendation was that we couldn't support a approval as proposed simply because it doesn't meet the first standard, but it's up to the planning commission to weigh and balance these two policies and see if there is substantial evidence that would support a specific, site-specific analysis that would override the first policy because it would be more consistent with the second. As I noted, there's a geological, geological assessment letter, and Mr. Simmons is here today to speak in more detail to it. I won't pretend to have his expertise. It's included in your packet as Exhibit D. Mr. Simmons extrapolates that the volume of soil within the planter boxes that exist there now could be as much as 50 cubic yards. So removing those planter walls could be essentially disturbing approximately 50 cubic yards of soil. This obviously could increase the potential for instability. Mr. Simmons also states that in order, if you were to do that, in order to provide a stable slope, you would, which is typically 1.5 to 1, you would need to also remove an additional 50 cubic yards of soil. So it's quite an estimate of disturbance for the area if you were to try and do that. And as such, Mr. Simmons concludes that he would recommend keeping the walls in place and planting with drought-tolerant plants. So for the planning commission's consideration today, as far as the already performed removal, staff recommends that you approve that part of the project. And for the two remainder, for the remainder of the improvements, you really have two options. You could find that the brick wall and wood fence and wooden planter walls are inconsistent because they're on the bluff face and should be removed, or that with the ability to balance policies, find the brick wall and wood fence and wooden planter walls consistent and allow them to remain subject to conditions of approval because they are not contributing to erosion or geologic instability. So that concludes staff's presentation, but I am available for questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff at this point? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm just, I know I've asked this question before, but I just want to make sure I have it clear in my head. So the city does not do peer review or have an opinion on the applicant's geology report. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, the city currently doesn't have a contracted geologist to peer review.
So when you're balancing those options, and I know you're balancing because you've portrayed it that way, but you did come out with a recommendation, and you're leaning towards a policy decision rather than an application of a report of what's on the ground, is, tell me how you get there where you're looking at a book rather than a scientific report, or why that would mean more to you in this particular case to make the recommendation to remove everything when the geology report says it would be safer to leave everything?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I don't know that, so staff, we equally are torn between both options. And I think we're just being honest that if we were to go with a policy recommendation, it would be no bluff face development. I think we're still looking to your commission to kind of balance which is more appropriate, knowing that bluff face development is precedent-setting and also that it's challenging when you're dealing with as-built development, which is also precedent-setting. We have a lot of as-built development.
I think we have a lot of bluff top. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, removal, is that also considered development under our local coastal plan?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, that is correct. So development includes even landscaping, installation of plants, demolition, removal, as well as construction.
Okay. And then, let's see, a building permit was issued, but then it was discovered that a coastal development permit was required. That is the normal procedure for the city, is first the coastal development permit and then a building permit?
That is correct.
Okay. And when we issue a coastal development permit, I guess we're anticipating, I'll use the word anticipating, but we anticipate, or should we anticipate, that it's reasonable that a building permit could be issued? Or is that totally subject to the city?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, that's difficult to ascertain at the planning stage usually. Certainly, we wrap in the building permit staff as part of the DART review of projects. However, they typically can't comment in great detail on the potential for something to meet building code until they have structural details.
Right, generally, but let's say we're, in this particular case specifically, we're looking at a removal versus something that has to comply with code. So I guess, would we have some type of hint here today on whether a removal, if we propose it, could get a building permit?
Commissioner Campanella, so yes, I spoke with Chris Short, who is one of the plan checkers in the building department and actually quite specialized in bluff face. And he says for demolition, for building permit for demolition, they don't have the detailed standards, for instance, that we would actually in the planning. It's just demolition, and you hire the appropriate parties that conduct that carefully, different than construction where you'd have how you would construct. That's different in the planning world. Demolition, we still look at all the impacts, how you would go about it. So we would probably look at it in detail. Demolition is, would likely be approved as a building permit without substantial complications if the applicant felt they could achieve it.
Okay. My last question at this point is, the walls four feet plus four feet might equal eight feet. In this condition, is it because they are close together, is there any vertical portion that exceeds, that goes up to eight feet to the combination, or is it just proximity of four-foot sections to each other horizontally, within a certain amount of feet?
Commissioner Campanella, the brick wall with the wood fence above is built on top of each other. It has a concrete foundation as well. So it's really the combination of its foundation, the brick portion, and the fence, which are all aligned in this instance. They could be offset by four feet and still have accumulated height, but the way it's constructed, it is aligned.
Okay, so they are actually an integral eight feet into the air?
As measured from the lowest point of grade. So you also have to consider it's not just where the higher point of it touching the fence, but from the lowest point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Short?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions at this point for staff. First, on page four of the staff report, under coastal act and local coastal plan consistency, I don't know, Ms. Arsenega, if this is to you or Mr. Vincent, but the way this first sentence is structured seems to indicate, and it's used the word must, that we must, the project site is located, okay, and must be found consistent with the city's local coastal plan, which implements, and it goes on, but for the California Coastal Act. So in terms of the slide that discusses balancing of policies, and I asked Mr. Vincent this briefly earlier, I'm looking at considerations, mitigating factors, et cetera. You mentioned site-specific, that we might need to consider in balancing that would not allow us to find the project completely consistent. Again, it's this word must that I'm kind of tripping over in terms of it sounding like a firm requirement, and I don't know, Mr. Vincent, if you have any comment about that for me to consider?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Schwartz, the way I answered the question before was that you're not going to find a circumstance that is completely compliant with the two policies, given, you know, with the geologist's recommendation. What you're doing, if you follow the geologist's recommendation, is reconciling the two policies and finding the greatest amount of consistency giving effect to both of them. 8.2, you're familiar with this policy, no development on bluff face with limited exceptions. Those exceptions don't apply in this case. Public Resources Code Section 30,00253, don't take actions that destabilize the bluff. So if you're, you're reconciling those two circumstances where the geologist is telling you to remove these structures just by removing them, I'll leave, you know, you can question him, don't I, I don't, I'm not going to profess to know what solutions would be necessary if you remove the structures to stabilize the slope with something else, or with no, with no development, no physical improvements, but to somehow alter the bluff face in a manner that results in a stabilized condition without improvements. I'd leave that to Mr. Simmons to advise. But that's where, what you're working with, is two policies that are kind of internally conflicting with one another. How do you get to a finish point that gives the greatest effect to both of them?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. My second question at this point is, it goes to the issue of removal, and connected to removal is a question I have about maintenance. So if, let's just, let me just play this out. If we say that we can support by balancing the policies, finding the greatest consistency between the two policies to allow certain as-built conditions to remain, my question is, as erosion occurs of these as-built conditions, is there anything, Mr. Vincent perhaps, that we could consider folding into the conditions of approval such that at some point during the deterioration beyond 50%? I don't know what that might be. That then we could require a condition that would require removal? And I've been trying to follow the coastal commission's evolving policies on this same matter of maintaining versus removal.
So Madam Chair, I did contact the chief building official this afternoon. We've been trading emails actually during the prior presentation. The suggestion of the chief building official is that if you were to leave the improvements to remain, it'd be important for the building department to know the condition of those improvements over time. His suggestion would be that the, if the improvements were to remain, that the applicant would be required to provide a bluff stability observation prepared by a certified geologist or equivalent professional to the building department to provide information regarding the status of the structures so that if in the case that the structures get to a point where they're creating an imminent hazard to either the occupants of the property or members of the public, then the building official would have the information necessary to take appropriate action.
Thank you. That's very helpful, Mr. Vincent. Those are my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights on, so. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Vincent, that appropriate action then would be, or could be considered an emergency situation, which be different than trying to get, come back to us for a coastal development permit?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, when I talk about, you know, an imminent hazard, that is a condition that is in emergency. It would be, that removal, if a removal was the necessary action, would likely be processed with an emergency coastal development permit, which does have a process that returns to the planning commission at some point, but not in an emergency fashion. The exigent circumstances, you would get a permit on an emergency basis, and then it would, there'd be a check-in later after the fact.
Commissioner Jordan?
So, Mr. Vincent, so in my perfect world, what you just explained to me was the emergency would happen after a plank fell down and hit somebody on the head, and then people would respond to that. Did Mr. Steffler suggest his thing that he called bluff stability observation plan could be an annual report back, or a five-year report back for perpetuity?
Commissioner Jordan, what I was describing was an annual report that would provide a status update of the improvements, hopefully before the plank hits someone in the head. And that it would, if it got to a point where that was a possibility, then the building official would have the information necessary to take the order that the improvements be removed in an appropriate fashion.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Allen, welcome.
Thank you. Trish Allen with Suzanne Allen, planning and permitting. Hopefully this is all fired up. So I'll do my best to be brief and not be redundant to staff's presentation. They gave a great overview of the project history, and for the current owner, sort of an unfortunate circumstance that he's been placed in with the zoning inspection, identifying just the wood deck platform and brick stairs, not identifying the bluff face planter walls. And, well, let me just go through some photos, and then I'll back up and comment on the inspections and the timing of hearing this information. So Ms. Arsenega, we have the same photos, so I'll just flip through these very quickly. Closer look at the property here, the wood deck platform that's been removed, and then you can't really see the steps going down to it. We're talking about these walls here, some here, and then some up a little bit higher on the west side. And just a view of the backyard, a view looking over the bluff edge, the previously removed wood deck platform prior to, that's prior to demolition, and then the condition following that we observed out at the site visit. So once, once the ZIR was completed before the property was put on the market for sale, it was flagged to remove this platform. At the time, the agent did go to the city and submitted for a permit for removal, it was issued, an inspection happened, and the case was closed. He was able to place the property on the market with a clean zoning report, no encumbrances. I'm not sure at what time staff realized that a demolition permit was issued without proper coastal processing. The parcel was flagged. That information was simply entered into the parcel information in the city's database. No one was informed. The applicant who had been issued the permit was not informed, asked to come back because there, I believe there was time to do that. So it's just sort of a detail in terms of the history of how we got to be here. It wasn't until escrow had, you know, the property was marketed, sold, escrow closed, the current owner who's here, his agent or architect came to the counter to find out about doing a remodel, and that's when the information was brought to their attention. So it's, it's just unfortunate. I was brought on to help with the coastal processing about last year. I've been working on this for about a year for this removal, to bring it to this commission. When it came to light later that there were some added improvements on the bluff face that needed to be dealt with, surveys had to happen, more technical analysis. So the scope of work did grow from what I understood the task at hand was. Interestingly, we're not exactly sure when the other, these walls were installed. Staff has looked at some aerial photography, maybe the late eighties. In speaking with the neighbor to the east, he thought early eighties. The property has gone through some improvements and permitted improvements. So, and I believe you now have a copy of the zoning information report that was requested at the site visit. So within those documents, it does mention an addition or remodel that occurred in the mid nineties. So conceivably, these walls were there at that time as well. The work, because of its location for that addition or remodel away from the bluff, did not require a coastal review, but there was still staff review of the project and a coastal exclusion was granted. Just more in the way of history. And then to Commissioner Campanella's questions, these are the conditions where cumulatively, because of the horizontal proximity, we're at it just about eight feet between this concrete foundation, this brick wall, this low fence, and then the fence steps up, and I believe up again here, but there isn't anything on its own that's eight feet in height. And this is a sort of a close-up, this is where that deck platform was removed, and this is the post sort of sticking out there, and I'm kind of standing right on top of it there. And that is a feature that the geologist is recommending for removal. So that's just the View West, and obviously, we've talked about that next door. Staff did ask us to take what we could of view from the beach without getting taken out by waves. I had to kind of identify features in the area so that we could see that, you can't really see what's happening up on this bluff top from the beach. Certainly, if you're out on the ocean further, you'd be able to see a little bit more. So staff has gone over the site plan. We were talking at the site visit about the restoration landscape plan. Part of the project and sort of a mitigating factor would be to remove some of the existing lawn. That is one of the geologist's recommendations. In his report, he note, he suggests that we remove it 20 feet back measured from the sea cliff. We have all these terms for the bluff edge, the sea cliff, and we weren't quite sure where we were measuring from at the site visit. So at this point, right here is the surveyed bluff of edge, and it's a, I believe it's a green line on the plans that you have in front of you. And so from here to here is a distance of 20 feet. And as the bluff edge curves down here, the lawn removal boundary, if you will, also curves in a radius to maintain that 20-foot removal. If that makes sense. And then as we go further to the west, actually, the dimension ends up widening, so we're more than the minimum recommendation. And I believe it's just a design aesthetic that the landscape architect built in, in terms of wanting something that looked nice out here. But it meets it minimally in terms of geologist's recommendation, and then it, there's a little bit extra over on this end in terms of, as the bluff edge is further C-word on that side. side. So, this plan sheet was intended to help understand the varying heights of these really planter walls. I mean, we've, just similar to the bluff edge, we have lots of terms to describe these. I don't think they're retaining necessarily, you know. They have some soil in them that they're holding up, because the removal would require the removal of that soil on top. But in terms of their depth and a footing, I believe we've done some approximations, and that information's in the geologist's report, but they don't go very deep, nine or 11 inches or something like that. So, you're clear on it, but I have to restate it, since I'm standing up here. Our request is to, aside from what's already been removed, is to retain the as-built planter walls, the wooden fence, and the brick wall. And that is consistent with the geologist's recommendation. The landscape plan provides for increased slope stability. The idea is to minimize erosion. And, you know, we have visual policies, too, and we want to enhance the visual and the character of the site. This project, as the applicant has proposed, will minimize disturbance and erosion on this bluff face, and reduce the potential for oversaturation by removing a portion of the existing lawn. Staff has gone over these competing policies, and just to kind of touch on those, and weave my points into them, you know, in terms of the scenic and visual qualities, the project's consistent with that policy. Minimizing adverse impacts, you know, Mr. Simmons has looked at this. We asked him, can we remove these? You know, can you make a recommendation to remove these because of their location? And he said he just, he couldn't in his expert opinion, or he just, he wouldn't feel good about it, because so much disturbance would have to occur to go along with this, which we've talked about in terms of approximate grading quantities to achieve that. They've been estimated to be installed in the mid 80s by previous ownership. I think we have a case of unique circumstances. You know, Mr. Vincent said it also, we have to sort of balance these competing policies, or we're asking you to, I'm not, I don't have to do it, but we're asking you to consider balancing these policies. Staff mentioned the word precedent. It's something that I think about a lot myself, and I can understand the difficult position. And we were here a few weeks ago talking about a similar topic, a little bit different because we were proposing improvements. These features have been on the bluff face for over 30 years. That doesn't mean that they should get to stay necessarily, that's not my point, but they have been there a long time. What do we do with that? Their presence doesn't necessarily intensify the use on this property, a little different than other cases where folks are asking to propose new improvements in these sensitive areas. I think a means to deal with the concern about making decisions that are somehow precedent, setting a precedent, is to look at the findings and be as specific, that's the purpose of the findings, is to look at special situations and elaborate on your opinion about that, about the proposed development, so that you're sending a clear message that you're not setting a precedent, for example, that there are unique circumstances at play here. There are site-specific, there's the topography, the site-specific condition here, that maybe the best thing to deal, to do is to leave these in place and stabilize it, and have project conditions that protect public health and safety. So, have a monitoring condition to make sure that, not only that the wooden planks are staying in place and not falling off of, nobody wants that to happen, but also to make sure that the restoration plan is, landscape plan is successful, and re-establishing that bluff face. So, I've used a bit of time, more than I planned on. So, I'd like to reserve the remaining time. Adam Simmons, our geologist, is here. I thought it'd be best to have him just come up and answer your questions, than, rather than go over the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Commissioner Campanella, did you have a question for Ms. Allen?
Okay.
Ask questions for Ms. Allen, go ahead.
Why don't we, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Allen? Yes, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. Ms. Allen, do you happen to have a timeline? I was trying to line up the date from which the ZIR, the report date was March 6, 2017. It has a one-year expiration. I was trying to follow, then, the activities that have occurred in terms of the removal of the viewing deck, well, the building permit, removal of, you know, and so forth, to where we are today. Do you happen to have a slide or something that could help me understand that, and I'll talk later about why I'm interested in the timeline?
Commissioner Wiskom, Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Wiskom, Commissioner Schwartz, I don't have a slide on the timeline, although the staff report does have a summary, but the real estate agent who was involved in this gave me a little timeline that I could read from, if you like.
What's the building permit approval date? What is that? Am I overlooking that in the package that we have?
Yeah, it's in the packet, March.
Okay, let me go, Ms. Galarte's giving me some direction.
It's 3/8/17.
What's the exact date, Ms. Galarte, or?
March 8.
March 8, 2017.
Okay, so what we're, okay, I'm going to take that into consideration here. Okay, and then, let me see, Ms. Allen, if I had any other initial questions. Yes, I did. Going to the landscaping plan, I don't know if this is to you or the landscape architect, I wanted to get a sense from you about why there isn't a proposal to remove all of the lawn. As you probably know, we discourage, that's probably the best way to describe it, we strongly discourage lawn, natural turf, and the watering of natural turf in any way on bluff-top properties now. So, can somebody talk to me a little bit about why, you're going to remove some of it, why not remove all the lawn and go to?
Quite frankly, I'd have to ask the landscape architect or the property owner. I think the idea was to really propose the minimal amount necessary to mitigate the conditions. So, that's what we came forward with.
To mitigate the conditions?
I should, I shouldn't.
I guess I'm still not, I'm not understanding why some lawn is still desirable when there's a recognition that removing lawn is desirable.
Well, oh, they want Adam to answer the question, since it's his recommendation, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Adam Simmons, geologist, and I didn't mean to jump up in here and steal the limelight here, but I wanted to explain that question. That's a good question, because really, it's a matter of reducing the weight or saturation adjacent to the slope.
Right.
So, if we're back 25 feet, 40 feet, 100 feet, we're not having impacts on that slope, because the moisture that's traveling through the shallow-rooted grass is only in that vicinity. And it's the water that we see generating out of the slope in, like, seeps that you see as you walk along the slopes, isn't necessarily rainfall. It could be, you know, water that's been traveling from rain, or isn't necessarily irrigation water, it could be rainfall. It's percolating through the fractures of the rock, and it's going through maybe 25 or 35 feet of shale bedrock. In the alluvium, that material up top's pretty porous, so it'll seep out, too, but we don't see a lot of seeps along the alluvium. So, it's telling me we're not overwatering, like, say, for example, the Shoreline Park, it's very green, too, as you know. And so, the idea would be to keep the moisture application within a specific perimeter or proximity to the steeper portions of the slope, because if we add weight 25 feet back or 50 feet back, it really doesn't have a material impact to that stability of the slope.
So, I understand all of that, and I still don't know why any lawn is needed.
I'm not a fan of lawn, either.
I mean, you have so many other materials, environmentally sensitive, drought tolerant, in the landscaping plan on, you know, sheet CD-1.
Which I like, it's fabulous.
Page 2, so I, okay, if you want to just ponder that, I can press that later, but I'm really, I'm really going to drill down on why any lawn, and we need to start looking at this really seriously on bluff tops. So, okay, okay, thank you. Let me just see if I had any other initial questions, otherwise, I'll come back to probably other questions that I have. I don't know, Ms. Allen, if this is to you, but you heard Mr. Vincent talk about his recent communication just today with our chief building officer, relative to some new conditional language that we might consider, and this would be an annual report to the city in looking at bluff stability, determining bluff stability, status of structures, determining imminent hazards, so that over time, we could determine whether or not deterioration requires removal as opposed to maintenance. So, yes, would that be you, Mr. Simmons?
I think I could answer that, or at least try to answer that. I do get called in for that same reason, for other projects, typically more of the higher erosion-rated areas like Isla Vista, which is one example, where the rates of erosion are as much as a foot a year on average. So, we get called out, there's damage, there's, decks are undermined, or a structure's undermined, so we get called out to evaluate that, and to decide how far back to cut the structure, so it doesn't become a wooden plank on the slope below. So, it's not uncommon to have that consultation in terms of the ordinance.
Or a condition of approval, I mean, you're calling it a consultation. I'm taking it a step further as conditioning the project to require that.
I think it would make sense to have something like that. I don't want to.
And I'm hearing Ms. Allen say the applicant would be open to that. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. I'll probably have more questions later.
Okay. Mr. Simmons, did you have a presentation also as part of this?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I'm welcome to, I mean, I candidly like.
I think Commissioner Jordan had a question for you, and I do, too, and Commissioner Campanella.
So, really, I'd just like to get your opinion. So, you heard annual over there. Does the site for this stability assessment, is it a site that lends itself to an annual, or could it be less frequent?
Well, when there's years of drought and no wave action, it would be easy to postpone it, but that's hard to predict. So, it could be annually with some, you know, if it hasn't rained, and, I mean, it's, for me...
We don't like that kind of legal language.
I know, but I'm just saying, geologically, it's not set in stone, but ideally, yes, prior, just following the rainfall season would be the appropriate time to come out and see what's happened.
So, I know Ms. Allen already went back and huddled, but I guess maybe you might want to huddle and say what that's going to cost.
It's pretty simple, it's easy.
And, you know, it's going to cost $5,000 a year for every year of the rest of the property owner's life. That seems like a crazy burden, but you might just, you guys might confirm and give a thumbs up before we start flailing away on conditions.
Sure.
Okay. Then I had one more question for staff. I'm still bothered, still want to walk down, I still want to fall down the side of the bluff there, but I'm still bothered by where I asked somebody on the site visit if there was a active drain coming out of the face of the bluff, where it looks to me that it's not old erosion. And you had a picture, one of your first pictures, looking at the bluff there, and it's kind of to the right of the vertical stairway, and it just kind of looks like a little rabbit hole in there. And somebody responded to me that that drain was capped. But it just seems odd that it's capped when it clearly looks like there's been erosion in that area. You had a bigger picture that filled up the whole screen, and then it showed, it showed on the left side, it showed the, there's like a vertical ladder with a piece of wood next to it. I thought you did.
I think that might have been part of Ms. Allen's presentation.
Was it yours, Trish?
I think it was.
No?
If you go to Slide 4, I think, and it'll be at the bottom part of the slide, that's where you're talking about, right?
Yeah, but I thought you had, somebody had a picture from the ocean side looking in. So, where you see that little scarring with the dark, with the dark spot there? Almost, it's not it, no, it's none of those. So, there was, there was a photo with, on the left side, there was a ladder, lattice-looking thing coming down the side of the face, and right to the right is this area that looks like erosion. And I have no idea whose photo it is. Let's go back, go back one there. Well, that's close enough. So, you see the little rabbit hole in there to the right of the vertical piece of something? I'll let you miss it. There you go. Okay. So, that looks to me like a drain hole, and I asked about it at the site visit, and I was told that it might be, and if it was, it was capped, but it kind of looks like an area of erosion to me. And so, after all that, my question is, do our, is there a prohibition against having an active water discharge spot on the, whatever you want to call it, the bluff face, and it has to be carried down like that pipe does over on the east side of the property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I believe there is. I was trying to locate it.
Okay. I'd be pretty happy with that, because it would make sense, and that's what I see usually along there, is I, when you're out on the beach, you see a ton of those little mini culvert kind of things.
I think it's a coastal policy. So, the local coastal plan, Policy 8.2, on page 5 of your staff report, the exception for bluff face development, or one of the exceptions is for pipelines, sorry, drainage systems. The exception of drainage systems identified in Policy 8.1, which we don't have in front of us, no new development shall be permitted on the bluff face. And then, I think, Policy 8.1, which, since there was no new drainage proposed, we didn't include, that specifies that...
So, what you're referencing there is an exception. What I'm actually saying is there a prohibition against...
I believe Policy 8.1.
To me, it'd be more in our stormwater management plan, to, locally, that would prohibit bluff face drainage, that it would have to be conveyed either, because I've seen it before in other properties down there, it either has to be conveyed to the street, or, and I think the or is off the bluff, to the toe of the bluff, does that sound right?
Yeah, and I believe that's in Policy 8.1.
So, okay, so it's a really long, tangential question.
Yes.
So, but I, but, okay, Scott's going to break. So, I guess my comment would be that I would like that confirmed, that there's no active drain there, because it just looks like there's been some recent erosion there, and there shouldn't be. Mr. Vincent?
Madam Chair, just to confirm for everybody, Policy 8.1, in the city's currently certified LCP, says that all new development of the bluff face, of bluff face land shall be required to have drainage systems, carrying runoff away from the bluff to the nearest public street, or in areas where the landform makes a landward conveyance of the drainage impossible, and where additional fill or grading is inappropriate or cannot accomplish landward drainage, private bluff drainage systems are permitted if they are, one, sized to accommodate the runoff from all similarly drained parcels bordering the subject parcel's property lines; two, the owner of the subject property allows for the permanent drainage of those parcels through his or her property; and three, the drainage system is designed to be minimally visible on the bluff face.
So, really, it has nothing to do about conveyance and erosion on the bluff face?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Has nothing to do about the conveyance and the potential erosion on the bluff face.
I would, I would say that it has everything to do with that. Its first policy is, send your water back to the street.
Right.
The street then has a common drain system that the city maintains, that goes down to the bluff, because that's the way gravity goes.
Okay.
But it goes in, it's one, concentrated in one place, so you don't have the visual impact, or the potential for multiple systems that can fail intermittently.
Yep.
So, that's the first policy. The second policy is, only in the case that if that's not possible, will you have a system. First off, that system has to be dealt with to accommodate the scale of whatever water is coming over that property, as well as whatever water that property has to deal with.
Yep.
Then the system also has to convey the water down to the, down the bluff face to the beach, to avoid erosion along the bluff face, and finally, the visible, it's supposed to be...
What you just said about conveying without erosion, I missed that in the second part, apparently, because all I heard was the third part that just says it shouldn't be visible. So if you stuck, if you stuck one of those things out just over the lip, and that's where the water left the pipe, and the water just rolled down the entire bluff face, you're telling me that would not be allowed, right?
I don't see this commission granting a coastal development permit for that kind of drainage system.
Okay. So, I'd just be interested to make sure that that doesn't exist, I guess is where I'm going with that.
Yeah, and I guess the.
There's no, there's no drainage plan with this project, so I'm just concerned that nobody's really looking at that.
Sure. Just to put a fine point on that, on my last comment, a drainage system that simply ejected water off the bluff edge only to have it run down the bluff face, I would submit that that's inconsistent with the Public Resources Code, section 30,0253, which is squarely in our review today.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Campanella, did you have a question?
A follow-up with our engineer, if I can. Same, same topic. If I noticed it correctly, the drain that's in the center of the lawn now, I'll call it a drain, there's a box in there, and then there's a pipe that looks like it heads towards the ocean.
Correct.
Okay. So that water, right now, is, if it's not picked up by, if it's not taken care of by some type of percolation on the lawn, it's great, the backyard there is graded, so excess runoff is going to go into that box.
Yes.
And right now, we don't know where the outlet is.
We do.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. It's on the bluff face?
It's, it extends down the bluff face through, conveying through the two lines that you saw in that one shot. So there's two flexible drainage pipes that go from top to bottom, and I inspected them, they're still flowing and perfect, but the old one, that was, that we saw that's capped, that was probably something that happened in that 82, 83 event, and maybe there's some more recent erosion since then, I'm not sure, but, but I know that they lost a little bit of land in that 82, 83 year, looking at the old aerial photograph, so they probably did the drain, put the pipe over the hill, and took it to the base of the slope.
And where does that daylight at the bottom, that pipe, how far down? Is it on the bluff face, or is it go all the way down?
It goes all the way down, at least, I can't see it past that photo there, but, yeah, you see it's to the base of the slope there. But the thing was, is the, that drain actually can't carry or convey water to the street because we're lower in elevation, so there's only one place for it to go, which is the base of the slope, because we don't want to percolate in the soil.
Okay, so it's on the, it's coming out the base of the bluff face currently?
Yes, correct, all the way to the toe of the slope.
Now, when you did your analysis of the natural lawn versus synthetic, what's that, did you take into account the fact that the amount of water that could go down that pipe would be, would increase based upon the runoff that's occurring from the grade of the synthetic one?
I'm hoping that it doesn't increase, so it just stays the same, because that material that's there is porous, so water will still get into the soil and be able to absorb by the new plantings that they're proposing along the outer edge of the, of the landscape area.
Okay, so overall, it should be the same. So when we were saying, for example, why did you up, keep some lawn, why some drought tolerant, why some synthetic, that does not absorb water, the synthetic, right?
Right.
It does runoff. So you balanced those out, so the runoff through that pipe down to the, the base of the bluff would be consistent with what it is now?
It would be likely the same, if not less, because we're taking out more lawn and putting in plants in those areas, so there's actually a good portion of that lawn area that's being recaptured by natives, so those would be more absorbent, so it should be a balance to our favor.
Okay. So there's a lot of thought that.
I mean, we could talk to the landscaper more about that, I'm just the geologist, but that would be my take.
Okay. In your consideration of leaving things in place, did you consider at all what's happening on the neighboring property, given the, the block wall, first of all, which is probably substantial, with the big foundation, I guess, running along the side yard, and then also the flying bridge, or whatever we might call that, the beached patio?
Right.
Are you, was that consideration that, that could be having an influence that you'd like to keep in a stable condition and not maybe cause some harm by removing what you're suggesting that we keep in place?
That's a good question. I, I feel that there's no material impacts to the property to the west, no matter what we do there, because they have a very large cut and retaining structure there, so we could do whatever we want, it wouldn't impact them, other than, we don't want to direct water down over the slope and obvious drainage, but, but on the east side, where we have the, the small brick patio division, that neighboring property to the east is actually at the same elevation as the top of this brick wall here, so it's a step-down feature that might have been created when they did the construction of the wall itself. So, at this particular case, if we were to remove the, the brick, we would not only be impacting our property, and maybe even some plants nearby, or, or at least the opportunity to keep the melaleuca and neighboring plants, but also infringe upon the property to the east, because it's require, you can't just leave a vertical slope, we'd have to cut back into their property, take that dirt out, which I didn't even include that in our 50 cubic yard calculations, but if you did take that out, we'd be chopping into their property, yes.
And this brick wall is, from what we can see, is retaining in nature currently?
Oh, it's retaining, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, did you have more questions?
Thank you. I realize I didn't ask a question about the surveyed versus map top of bluff, and this came up very briefly at the site visit. Mr. Simmons, could, I don't know if we, if we could get a slide up here that shows your supported surveyed versus the city map top of bluff, and if you had any, does this affect the project, the proposed project at all, though really, we haven't discussed that yet today, and I didn't hear anything from Ms. Arseniega or Ms. Allen.
I don't have a problem with either selection of the top of slope, so it's, the geology's, it really isn't immaterial in terms of the slope and the stability, so whether we choose yours or the steep edge, it doesn't matter, but my, my recommendation is to stay 20 foot from the steep edge of the slope in terms of application of water, but if we choose a, a top of slope that extends halfway through the lawn, or, or 10 feet into the lawn, whatever, that doesn't have any slope stability effect, I mean, it's more of a policy.
So is it that you're accepting of the city, whether or not you agree, you're accepting of the city mapped top of bluff for the project design, project proposal purposes? Trying to be clear about that.
Yes. I have, I don't want to go on record that say I approve anything that, from that standard, but, but I, in terms of this discussion today, yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Thank you. That's my, and then just one other question, Mr. Vincent, I, this is what I was trying to get at when I was looking at the timeline, I wanted to ask you, I'm looking, so, here are the dates of the ZIR, report date, March 6, 2017, and a, and then it, on March 14 of that same year, the building permit was issued to remove the viewing deck, and the ZIR expired March 6 of this year. So, with any other requirements that the city thinks needs to be brought forward on this property and regarding this project, does the ZIR not, how do I put this, Mr. Vincent? It seems to me that there's some kind of a closure, a legal closure that occurs on March 6 of 2018 for a property owner that has satisfied the major violations called out in a ZIR, and yet, we're here past the March 6 date with additional requirements, so is it that the Coastal Act supersedes any other requirements that the city has, like in a ZIR for, for these types of property changes or improvements?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, the members of the commission, the, the simple answer is no, there's no legal cutoff. The more complicated answer, or more thorough answer, would be, what, the concept you're, you're getting at is, is equitable estoppel.
Yes.
The concept there is that somehow a governmental agency has done something, the private property owner has, in reliance upon that action, taken actions of their own, in, in reasonable reliance upon that, and now, or at a future date, is finding themselves in a position they don't want to be in, or they want to hold the governmental entity to, to have to stop itself from doing something further. The, the public policy of, it, the public policy of equitable estoppel says that it is very difficult for a property owner to, to obtain that kind of relief, that, and the balance here is that the public policy's involved, and there's, it is, you know, ultimately, that's a kind of a judicial, it's a judicial decision, a property owner can assert equitable estoppel against a governmental agency and get a, a writ of mandate, if they are successful in arguing so, from a court saying, governmental entity, stop further action. That would be the, that would be the remedy to a successful case for equitable estoppel. The court decisions have said that that should be a very high burden for an individual property owner to achieve, because the enforcement of the existing laws is implicitly to the public benefit. The laws that are put in place are supposed to benefit to the welfare, health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Those are the touchstones for the police power. So, yes, I understand that there's a timeline here, and there've been, admittedly, there've been mistakes associated with the city's actions in regard to that, but I would submit to the planning commission that those mistakes don't justify violations of the Coastal Act. The, over, over time, the Coastal Act needs to be enforced and implemented for not only the benefit of the adjacent property owners, not only for the benefit of this property owner or their successor, successor owners, but also for the general public as a whole. And, you know, the, this property owner and other neighboring property owners are looking to, I, I don't know what, you had a couple different nicknames for the, the, the building next door. Sooner or later, we're going to deal with that. And I don't think this property owner, or other adjacent property owners, or even the general public, would want that property owner to be able to say, hey, despite the fact that I didn't get any permits, or my predecessor didn't get any permits, I now get a free pass for this? That, that's where, that's why the burden for equitable estoppel is high.
Thank you.
And it's, and it's burdensome on the individual property owner, I, I acknowledge that, and, and the last point I would make is, this whole process, the, the requirements of land use law on individual property owners are no-fault requirements. In other words, any property owner that has a zoning violation or a building code violation, that violation doesn't require some, you know, a mens rea, like a criminal offense. You don't have to have unclean hands to, to be responsible for curing a zoning violation. And so, while I understand that the plight that this particular property owner is in, and, and the burden that this has been, it, the, the violations are, you know, exist, and it's really kind of immaterial to what your job is today, which is figuring out a pathway and a solution forward as to how they came in to be in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Simmons all, all along about the, what is on the, the top of the, the level area there where, where it's lawn now? In your professional opinion, what would be the ideal surface up there?
You're talking about beyond the 20-foot boundary from the top of slope?
Yeah, between the drought tolerant plantings there, yes, and where now it's proposed either for artificial turf or another kind of planting, but leaving some of the grass.
So some alternative to the alternative, or to the, the turf you're saying, then?
Yeah, and, and, you know, geologically, in terms of preservation of the bluff face, what would be the best material to have up there?
For me, the turf was, I mean, I sat down with the planner, the, excuse me, the architect, landscape architect, and that was, that was the plan, is to do our drought tolerant landscaping on the steeper portions, and once we get up to the area that we walked, which is flatter, go ahead and put Astro, or not AstroTurf, but there's another name for it, sim, artificial.
Artificial turf.
Yeah, that's dating me, but, but that material that isn't real would be fine for that particular area for stability, since the plants that are being replaced on the slope are really the ones doing the job and protecting for erosion and slope stability. And as long as we're not introducing a weight to that nearby adjacent steep slope, that to me is the critical path, is to remove additional weight on that edge of the bluff there, and also provide plantings to keep the erosion rate down. So there's a, a net benefit with both of those features, but in terms of the area where it's currently lawn, we'll be definitely bettering what was there. The lawn was a high-water use plant, it's shallow rooted, it takes a lot of water to keep it alive, so, and it's done quite well, actually, for the last, who knows how many years, since the 1966 that I can see. So, for replacing with the, with the artificial would be a net benefit to that edge of the slope there, as long as we're getting our deep-rooted plants along the perimeter and the steeper areas, that's my main concern.
Okay. And would there be other possibilities, other kinds of non-vegetative ground covers, different types of?
You mean like flagstone or something like that?
No, because it's impermeable.
You could put permeable pavers, but I'm.
I was thinking more in chips of some kind, or redwood, or something like.
I mean, I suppose you could, as long as it doesn't erode over the slope, so as long as it's, I like to see non-erosive surfaces, but in that area, it's fairly flat, so you could propose bark, or, but I don't really like stones or gravel, that adds weight too, so, I just.
All right, thank you.
Don't go away, Mr. Simmons, please.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. So, in your report, you stated that the deepest embedment is about nine inches below grade. Is that the, I wasn't clear, is that the lumber or the steel supporting posts?
That's the lumber only.
That's the lumber only? So you don't know how deep the steel supporting posts go?
No.
Okay. But only nine inches below grade for the lumber?
Yes, and I could project that by looking at the measurements, a two by 12, really 11 and a half inches, and measuring down, so.
Okay, okay, great. And then you talked about, in, you talked about excavation of materials if the walls were removed, and the number of cubic yards, et cetera. Have you, well, for lack of a better way to put it, have you explored any compromise? In other words, is a partial removal of the walls, or removal of the walls with more limited excavation and disturbance possible in some areas of, of the site?
Yes, and I know we had talked about that in our discussion, is what could we do to reduce the height of these walls, or do something that's compromising, but in this particular case, the walls are more conforming to the slope, they're not really vertically, I know they're just saying they're eight footer, but they're really, you know, 24 or 30 inches, whatever it was, but they're, they're following the, the slope back in a stair-step type configuration, so removing the bottom piece, let's say, to try to make less visual view for somebody in the ocean or in a boat, wouldn't be helpful for the soil that's supported, or the next tier, or step that's above that, so it would be really hard to, to slice off one wall, its impacts would be to the top, unless we cut the top, maybe, but then you have a vertical face of soil, you'd have to cut that back. So either way, you'd be disturbing the slope, no matter how much, it's not like we have a retaining wall that's, that's, has free board behind it, or, or space behind it that's, that's been able to cut, and we lose that visual of the wall, and we don't have to disturb the soil, but we have everything flush to the top, and I might go a trim an inch off the planters, but I think that'd be more disturbing overall anyways, to, to no means for that end product.
Okay, so, so on that question, can we put up, I guess it's slide number four on staff's report, because I just want to, so, you're, you're basically saying that you'd have to take out, for instance, the plant, the planter walls, as staff is calling them, you'd have to take out all that material and just rely on the fact that that slope is out of the, the planter ones?
Yes, so you're talking right here.
Those are ones, yeah.
Right, so if I take out this wall, then this one's not going to be held, because they're, what they're doing, they, they basically put them back into the slope, stacked them up, each one stair stepping back, and kind of like a Mayan or, you know, Egyptian type of support, so, I mean, in a sense, it's a good system, but I wouldn't recommend anybody doing this on the slope, it is there now, but to take it out would be hard to do without disturbing the whole, because you can't just leave, you can't take out a little bit and then let this stand, so, you know, what would you do? You'd have to take it all out, and then you'd have to lay back the slope, which means you were tearing up this whole hillside, basically, to accomplish the removal of just one piece. You can't just take off this one and let that one sit there, or, or take off that one and let these sit there. one and let these sit there. It wouldn't, wouldn't fly.
Okay, and then in the area, let's call it the bottom of the slide, where basically the, the timbers, they're not really planter boxes, but the timbers go parallel to the shoreline. Do you know what I'm talking about?
You're talking about along the edge right here?
Uh, yeah, yeah, both places. So there's no possibility to remove those either. You think those are just?
The slopes much steeper than would be able to support it without these walls, so if we took them out, we'd have to lay back the slope, which means cutting into that slope there.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to just check and see.
They're very, very closely spaced, the two by 12s that run along this location right here, they're, they're stacked again like a stair step.
Right.
And I don't think they're meant for access, you saw, it's not really accessible.
Not for me, they're not, yeah. Okay. Okay, and then on, on the landscape restoration plan, the sheet CD1, it shows a assessed seed, hydroseed mix recommendation. So will, I, I kind of looked at some of the plants in that seed recommendation, and I just want your confirmation.
Sure.
Because one of the, one of the issues here is that, that if we were to approve the retention of those per your recommendation, that, that they'll be concealed over time as the plant material matures. So do you find that the plant material in this hydroseed mix is, is of sufficient height and girth to accomplish that job?
I would probably have to fall back again on the landscape person, but I remember going through that same scenario, I just don't remember, if you told me what the number, or the plants were, I could tell you if that was the case. But I remember going over the plants, but I don't remember what the list was, is it sea anemophis, or rosemary, I forgot that?
Yeah, I can't, it's really hard for me to read. There was some memulus, there was some eregonum, which looked like it might be high enough.
That's all Latin to me, but.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
No, actually, I do know the Latin names of most of these.
Yeah, but there's also some, some, some really shorter plant material here, too, that.
I think it's a blend, yes, that's what I remember, is it was a blend, so that some seeds pop out faster than others to create a, a quicker response to the disturbance, like they use it for fire areas and graded areas, so it would be something that some plants pop up quicker, the deeper rooted ones take a little longer, but they attain a certain height. So I think the mix will find, from my discussion with the landscape architect, that there was some that were capable of being, hiding the two foot or three D structure.
Okay, so, so, and Ms. Allen, you confirmed that also, that the goal here was to, if the, if the planter walls were left, that they would be concealed over time by this?
That's correct.
Hydroseed mix, okay, great, okay, that answers that question. And then I want to talk about the lawn next to the house. I don't have any problem with the owner having a little space where you can actually step out and walk and enjoy the view, and I think that's the, so my understanding was that you had two options here. You had synthetic turf, or you had what's called curupia, which I didn't know what that was, and I looked it up, and apparently, it's a new sod lawn substitute that, that lives and breathes and has flowers, and if you, or, or you can mow it, and it's very drought tolerant. The, the interesting thing to me, and, and obviously, I'd prefer the living, breathing thing, but the, the, the interesting thing to me was that, that were the notes, and for the synthetic lawn, it is stated that it will help eliminate supplemental water Is this, is this referring to penetration onto the bluff? Because then the next comment, it differentiates from the curupia, if I'm pronouncing that, sod lawn substitute that states it will help reduce supplemental water penetration onto the bluff. So that's, onto the bluff is not stated in the synthetic, but it's stated in, in the curupia, if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
It's lipia grass.
Huh, curupia?
Lipia grass is the, curupia is the variety. It's lipia grass, which I remember from my childhood.
Oh, okay, well, this is, apparently, this is a new introduction, according to what I read on the internet, so I, I don't.
She doesn't say, but it's the same.
Yeah, it's, it's a new variety, yes, that, that, so I'm just, the goal here is penetration to reduce penetration onto the bluff, right?
I think the intention was that that note should have been the same for each choice.
Been the same for both of them, okay, okay, that was, that was all I had. Okay, so I think what I'm going to do, thank you very much for that, and I think I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is anyone here to speak on this item from the public? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public comment. And Ms. Allen, do you have some closing remarks before we deliberate?
Thank you, I don't have any closing remarks, thank you.
Okay, and did Ms. Arseniega, do you have closing remarks?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, okay, we're having a little deliberation back here. You, okay, Ms. Allen? Okay, okay, great. So we are now back to the commission for any additional questions and deliberation. I think Commissioner Jordan, you had your light on first, perhaps?
Can't, got to go in order. So I appreciate staff's candor today on kind of walking back the, or framing the recommendation as my problem, rather than your problem, and not really a recommendation. I, I am certainly in favor of the project, and I am way more in favor of Plan B on protecting the existing stability and safety of the slope in, in referencing the geology report versus just a policy decision. I, I appreciate Mr. Vincent's lesson on who's ultimately responsible. I'm sorry, that's the brutal, the brutal reality of it, but I think this particular site lends it to a, a concern on whether removing these, these structures on the bluff would actually lead to more damage than keeping them on the bluff. I'm only in favor of that option if a condition is included for whatever we're calling this annual bluff assessment and, and stability process, so whatever that's going to look like. And I think Mr. Simmons would agree that that should be annually, or I took it as that based on his explanation of when it could not happen, it's just too open, so I think it would be annually. So, so I would support, I would, I would support, I guess, item two in the end of those recommendations, that, that they leave everything there. They leave the fence, they leave the wooden structures, they, and we have a method to assess that annually and bring it to the attention of the city if it degrades, and we move forward. I think, you know, the unfortunate thing about this, in fact, that particular slide is a horrible angle, because when they do go, they're just going, they're going straight down. This is not like your neighbor that we saw a couple weeks ago, that, you know, we were, we were supposedly on the top of the bluff for 20 or 30 feet worth of flat horizontal space. So this one's a little, a little different, but I think that lends itself to both arguments, that there are problems sitting there, and there are problems if you take them out. So, and I tend to, to go back on the, on the side of trusting the geology report and an annual assessment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I, we've heard a lot about the, our city and the coastal commission laws and ordinances and all that, and they assume a perfect world, as Commissioner Jordan earlier alluded to, we'd like to see that perfect world, but that isn't the reality with which we're dealing. If we look back in history, someone 30 years or more ago designed and installed these wood walls to control bluff erosion. It wasn't like somebody put in stairs to the beach, or put in flowers to look at, it was some attempt to control bluff erosion. And so we prefer the perfect world, but what we're faced with is making a decision of which is the least imperfect solution. And common sense, in my opinion, says we leave the, those wood planter walls, as they're called by the staff, I don't think they're planter walls, but erosion control walls, but I, I would say we leave them there as the expert technically recommends. And I would also say that I don't agree with the staff reports, two options for, regarding the walls. Number two says that we find the project consistent, if we want to leave the walls here. We, we've just been talking about how the fact that it's not consistent, so how can we find, make a finding that it is consistent? What we're talking about is we're making a finding of which is the least inconsistent of the two options we have, taking the walls out or leaving the walls in place. They're both inconsistent. Well, which one's the least inconsistent? And I say leaving the walls in place. So that finding would have to be reworded for me to find for it, but otherwise, that's how I think we should, should proceed.
Thank you. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with the comments of both Commissioners Jordan and Thompson, and suggest that the wording for what's given on page seven of the staff report, item two, say, find that it's consistent because it is the most protective of the bluff face. Would that, Mr. Vincent, would that be okay, do you think?
There, there's any number of ways we could parse the language here. I think what I'm hearing from the commission is that you're, you, you are going to make a, a decision, then I expected a motion would be that whatever the motion proposes is found to be the most consistent with the conflicting policies. So we'll, I mean, that, that would be, that would be a way to say it.
Put it that way, okay. I'd like to make a, make a motion that the planning commission go for, for option two.
Could, could, would you mind saving that till we hear from?
Oh, okay, there are other people, I wish to comment, okay.
Yeah, and then, and we'll, we'll come back to you for the motion. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to commend staff. Ms. Arseniega, I think you've done a particularly thorough job, which I personally appreciate, in terms of all of the information you've put together, how you've structured it, and has, as has been mentioned, a candid acknowledgement of issues that have occurred, in terms of what's brought us here today, and some of the unique challenges for the applicant. And I think that's, it's appropriate and it's admirable for us to have actually in writing. So having said that, let me first give you my bottom line, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about why I'm going in this direction. I will be supporting the applicant's request to retain the brick wall with wood fence and wood planter walls, proposing to landscape the bluff face with the native plantings to screen the structural features and provide additional slopes ability. And when it comes to crafting some additional language in our conditions of approval that pertain to an annual report back to the city chief building official, we can perhaps ask Mr. Vincent to assist us with that. And the reason I'm going to support the applicant's proposal is, first of all, let me say that if the applicant were proposing additional development on the bluff face, and I think as Ms. Allen knows me all too well, I would not be able to support this. That just flies in the face of a number of coastal act policies, and also what's good for the general welfare and, and health and safety of the public. But in this case, and I really appreciate that the property owner, the applicant, is really looking to just kind of safeguard, stabilize and safeguard the bluff and the bluff face, actually add some beautification to it, some, a visual aesthetic that it doesn't have today, and as I already said, stabilize, and then move that up and do more of that to the extent appropriate, up over the bluff top, or on the bluff top. So with that, I am going to support a balancing of policies, and I think a reasonableness, that's sort of where I'm coming out in this, a reasonableness in balancing policies with that specific fact of the applicant not attempting to, or not proposing to add any development or redevelop the bluff face. Before I go further, I just want to comment about the zoning information report. In 2014, Commissioner Campanella, I, and former Commissioner June Pujo participated for upwards of nine months, and Mr. Vincent participated as well, along with other staff, and the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, in a working group on the zoning information report process. Out of that, among some of the action items that came out of that was, were additional training and a checklist for us to use here in the city to ensure that both comprehensively and consistency, there was consistency to the types of reviews. I just want to underscore that I don't think we're there, and I would encourage our city to go back to that commitment, that understanding, and a process that we all said that we would employ, because I think there still remains work to be done in terms of the training and the consistency in how ZIRs are performed. Okay, so with that, and I'm going to just turn it back over to my colleagues, I don't think there's much more to say, not as a condition of approval, but I would simply encourage the property owner, along with the landscape architect and perhaps Mr. Simmons, to as, as much as possible, strongly consider something other than natural lawn for all of this area that meets your, your lifestyle needs, meets the aesthetic needs, but also trying to reduce additional watering as much as possible in terms of staying away from what we would consider the current high water lawns, natural lawns. But there are many options now. I know that this company out of Ventura, that's, I've been told is driving up to Santa Barbara, especially Montecito, four times a week, installing these eco lawns, high quality, very soft to the touch, comfortable to touch, under the feet and so forth. So we really have some new materials, new technologies that I think can be employed on our bluff top properties that are pretty darn close, and I think are environmentally superior, so I would encourage you to strongly look into that. And I think with that, I'll just turn it back over to my colleagues, and we'll work on that additional condition of approval in a few minutes. Thank you.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am in favor of the applicant's proposal. We do have a geologist who made his recommendations. I think the illustration of the brick retaining wall is a good one, to show what could happen if we took that out, and given his knowledge, and I, I think I, I'm also in favor of other recommendations that he's making to leave items in place. Removal, as we mentioned, is development, so we are opining on doing bluff face development if we so choose to require removal, and I don't feel comfortable doing that. I think as long as we're conforming with our local coastal plan and going along with the guidelines that the coastal commission has that we refer to, I think the situation of not removal, not new development, and possibly causing a, a situation that we would regret, it behooves us to leave those in place. I like the idea of monitoring. If we were to leave that there, and there was some type of movement in the future, it would be able to be seen. If we take it out and some rocks and dirt start moving, I don't know if anybody would ever see it. You know, you can have erosion going on and no way to tell. This is sort of a, no pun intended, but a benchmark, if we see problems that might be occurring in the future, we can spot it. So I like that, and, let's see, I think I've got everything, and then, again, I'm in favor of the applicant's position, and we'll support that. Thank you.
Thank you. I also will support the project. I think, I think it's, it's the right thing to. I think, I think it's, it's the right thing to do. I think that we can, I know we have conflicting policies, uh, in terms of the coastal policies, but, um, for me, it's the, it's the safety that's the, the most important aspect, and, um, I think that the geologist has done a commendable job justifying why we should not be, uh, removing these materials, but should, but should leave them, and, and that would fall under coastal act policy, uh, three oh two five three. I would also, uh, definitely support the, um, the bluff stabilization structural evaluation or whatever we're calling it, um, uh, on an annual basis. I think that should be a condition. Um, and it, as, as Mr. Simmons said, it should follow the rainfall season, so I think that should also be stipulated in there, so it's done at the proper time of the year. Um, and lastly, just a comment, I, um, would really like to see a, a, uh, living, breathing lawn, um, just as a comment, and I, I did really look at this Lepia nodiflora curipia for the lawn substitute, and, um, it looks like reasonable low-water use lawn, and I think it would be, um, a great choice. So, but that, that's just a comment. Um, so I believe that Commissioner Lodge is ready to make a motion, and go for it.
Okay. Well, I'll try, I'll try. Um, that the, um, project be approved, um, that it be found the most consi- the most consistent alternative, uh, the alter- alternative most consistent with the coastal plan insofar as it is the best way to prevent bluff erosion. Part of the motion would be to add a condition in the, um, to the conditions, uh, requiring an annual report by the building official on the condition of these wooden retaining walls, um, each year aft- after the end of the rainy season.
Second.
Okay. And I, I was, I don't, I don't know, we could make a condition that it be living grass, but I, I don't, um, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
After the rainy season, yes.
Madam Chair, can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
I, I think the building official would appreciate the, that the evaluation would be more than just the wood, uh, planter boxes, but also, uh, consider any of the bluff face improvements, um, including the brick wall and the fencing and so forth.
Okay, I would add that to the condition that in any, um, the conditions of any of the structures on the bluff face and their impact on the bluff stability.
Yeah, I think saying the bluff face in general with the structures there, so he's brought it back to.
Well, I had the impression it was relative to the, the things, the structures that we're allowing to remain.
Mr. Vincent, do you want it to this, is your recommendation to the structures that are on the bluff or to the condition of the bluff face?
Well, Madam Chair, I have a written condition that I can recommend.
Please do.
Okay, so this would be a, a condition eight in section C one, uh, section one C, a new number eight for the conditions of approval, it'd be on page three if it was written. It would be titled bluff stability evaluation, and it would follow as lo- as follows, "For as long as the bluff face improvements remain on the bluff face," so he doesn't have to keep on making these evaluations after they've been removed or they've fallen or whatever. Bluff face improvements remain on the bluff face. Owner shall obtain annually a bluff stability observation report prepared by a certified engineering geologist or equivalent. The report shall evaluate the stability of the bluff face and the improvements located on the bluff face and make recommendations of actions to take to maintain the stability of the bluff and protect public safety. The report shall be prepared following the spring rainy season and shall be submitted to the Building and Safety Division on or before May 31st of each year.
So moved.
Just the secondor of the motion, agree with Mr. Vincent's, very detailed, okay. So, um, okay, so we have a, a motion, I see some lights on, and second, um, I just want to clarify a couple things with the motion before we proceed with a discussion. My understanding, Ms. Arseneaga, uh, my understanding is that we may have to modify conditions C one and C five according to the staff report is, um, if, if, um, and...
Madam Chair, the, um, conditions C one and C five were actually written for the proposed project, um, so that, so C one, if we can go through it, um, the Planning Commission, um, the development is limited to the previously removed as-built brick path, steps and wood viewing deck, and then also the removal of the concrete support posts that was previously supporting the deck, um, and then approval of the as-built wooden planter walls, a brick and wood perimeter wall, and new drought tolerant landscaping.
Okay, well, okay.
And then C five?
The, the as-built wooden planter walls, um, so retention of, do we need to add retention of?
Sure.
Because that's not clear whether it's removal or retention. Okay. Um, okay, um...
Condition five does need to be revised.
Or, okay, a conditional retention of is really what it is, because with our new clause, it's, it's, there is a condition on it, so, okay. And then, okay, so, so that would modify C one, and then C five, and, and is the maker of the motion okay with that?
Yes.
And the secondor? Okay, and then C five, um, future threats to development, um, I'm only, I bring these up because this is what was in the staff report, is potentially having to be modified.
Correct.
And not knowing where this was going, I didn't read it very carefully at the time, but, um, you know, should remove the development. Okay, I don't know, maybe Mr. Vincent wants to weigh in, do we, do we leave that in there? Or we have another condition which is now eight, that, that, so do we?
Madam, Madam Chair, as I'm reading it, uh, I'm seeing that in this case, that the, it's, it would be an obligation that the owner remove the development authorized by this permit, so that would explain, and, and with your most recent amendment to C one, saying the retention of certain elements, that would be development authorized by this permit, then it, so then it, there's no, I don't see a, a conflict with saying including the brick wall and wood fence, wood planting walls, or other structural features, "That become unearthed in the event that the development is threatened with damage or destruction from waves, erosion, et cetera." This is basically just saying what, what would play out if one of these annual evaluations or if some circumstance came to the attention of the building official outside of one of these, the annual reports that we're talking about. If those conditions come, the building official will issue an order of the building official for this to happen. This is more of a notification and an, and an acknowledgement of those circumstances potentially occurring in the future if those improvements are unearthed or, or somehow, are subsided, you know, to the point where they're at danger.
Okay, so, so we're all right leaving that just like it is then?
I think, I can think it can remain.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that the last portion of that condition does clarify that that removal would require a coastal development permit, but as Mr. Vincent stated before, likely that would come under, after an emergency permit to remove.
Right, exactly, yeah. Okay. Um, okay, and then my last question is, and this was in the staff report, um, okay, if, if, if we've amended the conditions of approval in our, in the motion and the second, um, and then you talk about the applicant must apply for and obtain an administrative exceptions for the fence height, height on the eastern boundary. Is that something that we need to put in the motion or just in the record? That we don't need to, no?
Madam Chair, no, it's already part of the record. Um, it's an administrative, um, approval.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have more discussion? Commissioner Campanella, I see your light on.
Yeah, I, I think I've been satisfied that it's, uh, we can, we have a mechanism to handle more improvements than are currently being delineated, uh, because the inspection unearths it, then it comes back for another coastal development permit, so we're not missing anything. Uh, the only small thing I would say, instead of, I don't know if I would use the word retaining, because that could be confusing with what some of the structures are, whether they're retaining or not, I think staff used, uh...
Are you talking about in, in the first C one?
The verb retaining, that they're allowed to retain these improvements.
I, I changed it to conditionally retain, conditionally retain the...
As-built wooden planter.
The, um, conditionally retain the as-built wooden planter walls and a brick and wood perimeter wall.
I may be too particular here, you know, their wording was allowed to remain. I just think retaining is confusing when we're talking about some items are retaining or some are not.
Madam Chair, were you reading from a plan there or was that it from the staff report?
No, I made it.
You made it up?
I made it, yeah. And I, I only said conditionally because there is a condition on, on the retention of those planter walls, and that's as we just outlined.
Uh, let's see, my suggestion, if the, if the improvements are labeled on the plans that will be signed by the chair, then we will revise the conditions of approval to use the names for the improvements as identified on your plans.
Okay, okay, that's fine, but it, my other comment, Mr. Vincent, was that there's, in condition C one, as it reads now, there's, there's no reference to the allowance to conditionally retain the as-built wooden planters, which is what we're, we just made a motion for. In, in other words, that, that's missing, uh, they talk about removal of the concrete support posts, and then it goes on semicolon, as-built planter walls.
Yes.
So, so we need a word that, that...
Well, yes.
I think what you said was retention, wasn't it?
Retention of, and what I...
Conditional retention of.
What we'll do is we'll go through condition one, parsing out by, uh, if it's different treatment of different improvements, if you see, it'll be commas in between individual improvements, and there'll be semicolons between different treatments.
Okay, okay. We're getting a, an English language lesson here, yeah. I, I, I think I did say conditional retention of, which is different from retaining. Yes, Commissioner Campanella?
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, but, uh, staff used the word allowed to remain. Is there a reason you use this versus what we're proposing retain?
Commissioner Campanella, I think it was just along the lines of your thinking of trying to avoid the word retain because it's used in other ways in the report, so that was my only intention in the staff report.
And Commissioner Lodge corrected me, I used the word retention, not retain. So, so I, I think we can leave it to staff to, to wordsmith this and put the appropriate punctuation into...
Yes, I think the allowed to remain or something similar, I think, would, would avoid the confusion to staff's recommendation.
Okay, fine. Commissioner Jordan?
So, hold on to those fuzzy thoughts of approval. I just want to get my two cents in on ZIRs also, so, before everybody runs out of here with their approval. So, um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Lodge, um, and what, and, and I had a, a very informative, um, email back and forth with staff on how this particular one played out, and it makes sense to me from that standpoint, but we're still, I think, on the inside looking out, we're not on the outside looking in. If, if what we're doing fails to meet what is certainly a reasonable expectation of the person going through the process, then what we're doing is not right. It's not good enough. And in this particular case, I think, you know, I know, I know you don't, I know you're required to do these, but you don't have to do them unless the buyer or the seller or their agents all initiate the action. Lots of sales occur without any ZIRs being done because nobody brings it to the attention of the city. So in this particular case, all the parties did the right thing, and they had a expectation, I think, a reasonable expectation that something in, in my frame of view would be that's so obscenely apparent, uh, on the back of their property, wasn't even, wasn't even noticed as the process. And I get the whole lecture on who's ultimately responsible, but I think in the end, we're a, uh, we're a customer service organization. We're not just a processing organization, and for somebody to go through this and be blindsided on the back end of this, I just think, uh, it begs the question of have, did we go through that process several years ago and have we made improvements and, and are they evident? And the other, the other, uh, observation I would just have is just that form looks horrible. I mean, it looks like a thirty-year-old template form that somebody would, I would struggle to find the pertinent information on it versus what's just in there as filler. And, um, I, I think maybe that's part of the process. We're continuing to live with what we've always used, and, so, I only throw that in at this opp- inopportune time because I know I won't have a, an opportunity to say this anywhere, anywhere else without all you guys listening, but, uh, I think, I think it still needs some work also, so that's just my two cents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more lights on. We have a motion and a second. Is everyone clear on what the motion and second is? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I don't think so. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number five, administrative agenda and five A one, uh, well, this is committee and liaison reports, staff hearing officer liaison report. I know our, um, liaison isn't here. I don't know who the, do we don't have any of, do we have any thing for that one? Okay. Uh, other committee liaison reports, Commissioner Campanella?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. On the June fourth, uh, meeting, uh, the architectural water review, uh, eight thirty-five East Cano Prudino Street came in for some changes, uh, seeking final review. Uh, that was postponed, uh, until, uh, some of the details that they came up with were documented within the plans. Uh, nine twenty-six, Indio Amerto, the hotel, received project design review, P D R, uh, at that meeting, as did fourteen twelve, Castillo Street, uh, which was a revised project description, uh, under the A U D program, uh, medium-high density, and it came in with a revised, uh, revised description and layout, and, uh, the, uh, A B R gave it design review at that meeting, one stop, on the new plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Um, I failed to announce the ten-day appeal proj- uh, pro- uh, ten-day appeal period for, um, agenda item number four, so I am announcing it now. There is a ten-day period at which this project that we just heard at five Santa Cruz Boulevard may be appealed to city council. Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got like tons of notes on water, so I'm just gonna run through these really quick. There's absolutely no good news, of course. Um, I recently, uh, did about a half-hour presentation at the Mason Neighborhood Group, and their, the title of their thing was, "Are we still in a drought?" So I immediately just, uh, pummeled them on even asking that question as a thing. So, Lake Kachuma is at about forty percent capacity and plummeting. There's, uh, been no measurable inflow in a long time. Uh, we're about...
We're about to start the plans with the member agencies on moving the barge again to a pool that will pump when we get to summer. Gibraltar's close to or all the way full, but the water quality is so horrible from the runoff due to the fire after fire after fire that it is unusable. So we're waiting for that water to possibly settle and then skim water off the top, but right now it's a reservoir that's at capacity that's unusable. We're resting our groundwater pumps. I think there's three basins, but there's really only two basins we use. One's a lower basin, and that one is resting for a while because we have been measuring saltwater intrusion getting close to Highway 101, which is our line in the sand, so to speak, and so that's got to shut down for a while and try and figure out how it's going to get some water back into it. The Foothill Basin is probably about 30, 35% at capacity right now, and that would be our next go-to basin to come back to it, but we're still hoping we get some rain events to replenish that. DSal is working at 100, is successfully and effectively working at 100% capacity right now. You may remember our capabilities right now is only to push that water up to about half of the city horizontally, that we have no way to get it up to the other half of the city because we'd have to pipe it up to Cater and then run it back downhill. The negotiations that have started back up with Montecito Water District, if they are successful, they will involve the new infrastructure to pump water the rest of the way up to Cater because that's the only way Montecito can get it, is from Cater to them. So cross your fingers that that goes well because that will make that infrastructure improvement happen quicker. I still get pummeled wherever I am on what the heck are you doing approving new development while we're in a drought? And so I just want to reiterate the statistics. Right now, we're using about 10,000 acre-feet a year. If you took all the development that's in the pipeline and put it in place tomorrow, that would add about 20 acre-feet a year. So I realize it's 20 acre-feet a year times however many lifetimes of years that is, but the flip side to that is the economic stability and community benefit that that development brings and lends to the city. And right now, I think for somebody just to say we should not develop at all because we're in a drought just totally ignores that dynamic and obviously doesn't include those numbers. We're using 10,000 acre-feet right now, that's our supply, and it would only take 20 acre-feet more. That's about all. Really no good news. The glass is still half-empty, all right?
At least it's not three-quarters empty. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Commissioner Jordan. I heard that the state legislature passed.
It's on my notes. Mr. Thompson actually nailed me on that like the moment they passed it.
He saw you?
No, so actually, I reached out to the regional board, to a couple people I know there, and they actually had no information on that. That was totally done by the state water board. I believe in 2020, they're going to mandate city residential users are using no more than 55 gallons per day per capita, and by 2030, it goes down to 50. The good news in that is that we are already right around 50, so we are in theory in compliance with where we'll need to be. We do a great job. If you drive an hour or two south, they're about 90, 90 or 75. So there's some other places that are going to be hurt. And the bad news is it's probably going to reignite the discussion on agricultural use of water and their practices versus health and safety use for people. And I don't really know that there's a good resolution to that answer because you get into the rest of the issues on economic stability and providing food and whatever that may be, but I'm sure that's going to come up again to how many gallons of water an almond takes versus what I need to live in my house, so.
Okay, so, but it's on the basis of overall, the whole community?
I'm having lunch with Jeff Young next week to talk about this, so I'm hoping it's an overall community and it's not on Mr. Thompson's water bill, because I've already offered to send him some of my children so his per capita count goes up in his house and he can get back down. But I think it's going to be a kind of a blanket look at a community, because that data exists right now. Like I say, if you go into LA or San Diego, they are almost double the water use of us per person per capita.
Okay.
Then, but we're exceptional in the state, too.
Okay, because some people live in apartments and maybe they have a few potted plants, and other people have gardens and lots of fruit trees, so, okay, well, it seems fair if it's applied across the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the public is aware that our staff, as stretched as they are, continue to provide an interactive forum, informational forum through the land development team, open houses, which I attended just this week. This week, it was on accessory dwelling units and our new parking design guidelines. It's completely open to the public, whatever your interests are, whatever your roles are, and it's one of the few, I think, multi-team or interdisciplinary, interdepartmentally disciplinary, interactive opportunities for the public to ask questions of the myriad of experts in the city. And it's at 630 Garden Street, and I found it very informative, and I'm hoping not only planning commissioners and review board members, but also members of the public avail themselves of this session. It was from 3:30 to 5:00, and again, completely open house and interactive.
Where was it?
At 630 Garden Street, the Gephardt.
At Gephardt, okay.
At Gephardt Room. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Okay, just a couple of announcements. We have a, the next regular planning commission meeting will be on Thursday, June 14th, 2018. And then on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, we have another regular meeting, and at that meeting, it's been well-publicized, but that will be a meeting to discuss the local coastal plan update, so, for the planning commission. So please put that on your calendars if you're interested in attending that. And with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.